Meeting to order, and being as our city clerk is not present, is she online? She's not online. Okay, call her, please.
I'm here, Mayor.
Okay. You want to call her, Melissa?
Thank you. Mr. Greg David?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz?
Present.
And Mr. John Welch?
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, Dr. Lindstedt has not made it, I'm sure, because of the weather, so I'll lead us in a short prayer. Your heavenly Father be among our midst and help us as we make decisions tonight for the common good of our citizens and be in our, and help us in all things. Amen. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your power, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So do we have any agenda additions to make? Hearing now, we'll move on to consent agenda. So this consent agenda only has the minutes from the February 4th meeting, City Council meeting. There are no questions or discussion, I entertain a motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Schmidt, a second by Mr. Dean. All the payers say aye.
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 Close sign. Mr. David, did you say aye?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that motion carries five to zero. Move on to discussions and approval appropriation ordinance. So this ordinance encompasses expenses from January 29th through February 11th with one payroll cycle expenditures amounted to $894,295. The reported expenses, $50,937 are infrastructure costs for new developments, which are paid through special assessments. Any questions or discussion of the appropriation ordinance 2503?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we approve appropriation ordinance number 25-03.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any questions or discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 I think I heard five ayes.
Yep.
Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Requested, the city requested appearances, I don't have any, do not have any, so I'll move on to citizen concerns. I see no citizens here, so unless there's some on video, which I do not know if they are, we can move on to reports. We'll start with Mr. David, being he's remote, and we have to wait for him to come in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Welsh?
I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Dean?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one thing, thank you. So on 2:10 last week, on Monday, I attended the public open house, that was at Isley, for the USD 259 proposed bond. Just a reminder that early voting has started, and I believe that that's downtown Sudrick County courthouse location. But I believe by the end of the week, it's supposed to be at, in Bel Air or at other polling sites, so beyond the, you know, obviously with the weather, it's a little harder, but I urge you to get out and vote. And if you'd like to learn more about the bond issue and the facilities master plan, the easiest way to do that is to go to usd259.org/bond2025. Thank you.
Yeah, the early voting at Bel Air City Hall, I think, starts Thursday, is that correct? Okay, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and then after Saturday, you cannot vote early at City, at Bel Air City Hall. Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, I did attend the planning commission meeting, and there was a little bit of orientation, and so it was very useful to me taking to go through the procedures that they go through. So that was, the one thing I was concerned about in that meeting was there is the option for an appeals planning commission, and basically, they can take appeal, a zoning change, and then it goes directly in, it doesn't have to go through the council. So I just thought that was kind of strange for that to be true, because it seemed like, I would hope, that couldn't be a way to kind of do an end run around the council if there was a certain matter that they were concerned getting through. So, I don't know, that was just something that I noticed in that meeting.
That might be something.
I believe, I believe the, the planning zone, and I was there as well, that board is mainly when you appeal the ruling of the planning administrator, so Paula herself, you would go to the planning appeals committee. But Maria and I will check up on that, but a lot of the power rests in the city council, so I'd be surprised if that is the procedural step.
Yeah, it's just the way it was worded implied the council wouldn't be involved. So I just thought that, we wanted to check that.
Yeah, I'll double check that for you, but I believe that's what it would be that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hamburg?
Thank you, Mayor. Wednesday, the 12th, I attended the very brief special CCU meeting to approve those amendments to the sixth supplemental from each of the cities. I also attended the planning commission meeting, about an hour of Ms. Downs's presentation. It was good to review everything, the slide deck is in the, is in the planning commission agenda packet from that, if there are any residents that are interested in seeing the rundown. It's always good to hear from the planning commission and kind of how some of them think through these issues that eventually come to us, and they're probably tired of it, but it was nice to see the Bryans, the two Brian, the two new Bryans, your names are slipping my mind right now, the Brian Bryans, on that planning commission, and get to know, Brian Mackey and Brian Stewart, kind of get to know them a little better in their new roles, so that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, I'll do the mayor's report, so I understand council member Greg David is going to have a birthday next week, so happy early birthday to Mr. David. On Tuesday, February 11th, I attended the Wampa TP, TPB meeting, and we elected a new chairman, Russ Kessler, Mayor of Hayesville is the chairman, the vice chair is George Levy, the mayor of Goddard, and the attack chair is Dan Wildaszik, if I say his name right, of Butler County. And then we, we did talk about commuter flows, they were updated from 2021 data, so it appears US Census Bureau has a data lag for the basis of these reports, and so 2023 data should be available later this year. So we'll see if they have an update flows report at that time, and that counts the flow of traffic, of people coming into Bel Air and people going out of Bel Air to work, which is an interesting number. So this report shows that about 1,600 people come into Bel Air to work from outside, and we have over 3,500 of our residents who commute outside of Bel Air for work, about 120 who live and work in Bel Air. So there was a discussion about creating a toolkit for cities concerning complete streets, and I suggested that this is something cities need to do on their own with help of their engineering firms with whom we contract. I did not see, or did anyone try to provide a different perspective, so, so how this toolkit would be useful to the cities. So I do not believe Wampa will pursue this development, this toolkit. On Wednesday, February 12th, Chiswick Utility Authority held a special meeting, Ms. Hamburg already talked about that, we did approve the sixth supplement amendment for both this Bel Air and Park City, and so that has been done, and we are moving forward with our, we hopefully will see bids opening on the 27th for the new expansion. On Wednesday, February 12th, I also attended the utility advisory committee, they did one final review of it and adopted the updated water conservation plan, so this plan is to be submitted to City Council in March in time for spring watering. No doubt, we will continue to be in stage, at least stage two drought restrictions throughout 2025, unless we get some very significant rains. So on Thursday, February 13th, I attended the Regional Economic Partners REAP meeting, this group is still working on refining their mission, there was a discussion about overlap that this group is doing, that others are doing as well. There was a discussion about the extension of K254 through Mays and Goddard, that initial feasibility study was done some 40 years ago, so a new study is being considered, and about 40% of the land has been purchased for that expansion, and I suggested it possibly affect, the communities might want to consider joining the K254 Development Association. I believe Marcy will be inviting some of them to our next K254 meeting, I told them that I was not telling them that they could have joined it officially, because that's really up to the, to the existing group, but they're certainly welcome to come and talk to us. Evergy gave a presentation about their growth, and it appears they have not developed a new power plant in some 40 years. So two new gas powered proposals are, will be the first, and much more efficient than the existing plants. Currently, 40% of their electricity is generated from coal, and that is down from 80%, that was in 2005. McPherson Mayor Tom Brown announced that a 2025 economic forum will be held at McPherson on February 26th, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and the flyer provided does not give the location, but they do want RSVPs by February 24th, so if anyone's interested, would like to RSVP, you should ask for the location, and the RSVP is to be sent to email addresses kasim@mcphersonpower.com. And now I'll ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The UAC did approve an updated conservation plan, that conservation plan recognizes four stages of drought, whereas our current ordinances, two of them only recognize three. So in order to be consistent, we will ultimately, I'm sorry, I will propose to the council the repeal of those two older ordinances for a more updated ordinance. That won't occur until after the council actually approves the conservation plan, perhaps the council wants to take into account some amendments, and if so, I can include those in any updates. The second thing I was going to mention is I also attended an ADA training conference for summer camp, I know it's only February, but starting to get everyone in ready, looking at forms, making sure what governments and municipalities are required to do for summer camp and ADA disabilities, we're getting that completed. The final thing is the First Amendment training series put on by the LKM regarding managing disruptions at public meetings, very informative, very helpful, I will put together some notes from that and provide it to council in a workshop when council has some availability. Thank you.
Just a clarification on the water conservation plan, you're going to update the ordinance, I think the plan references some ordinances in it, so maybe they need to be removed or something, I don't know, it might be something to consider.
And I mentioned that, and I think the UAC chairman was going to remove all of those as well, so that way he wouldn't be including old ordinances in the council.
Well, he sent it out, I have not had a chance to review it, so.
I'll double check, thank you, Mayor, that's a very good point.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. Oh, I'm sorry, we almost forgot the city manager.
It's okay.
Okay, let's, let's hear what the city manager.
I'll be quick tonight, I get the hint. So just, just to be, just to be clear, Thursday, Friday, early voting here at City Hall from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then Saturday at, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., so early voting here at City Hall. This manager's report, I want to talk a little bit about animal control. If you may or may not know, in 2021, the city signed a contract with Sedwick County for their animal control. Prior to that, it was a mixture of our code enforcement officer and our Bel Air Police Department, but Sedwick County Animal Control is way better equipped to handle these types of situations, as well as they have kennels and vehicles to transport animals that they need. All animal controlled issues, residents need to call Sedwick County Animal Control, I put the number up there. Their primary focus is on domestic animals concerning the housing and care of domestic animals. They, of course, anytime you go to get your dog vaccinated or have license, it'll be through Sedwick County, so that's one of their top priorities, is ensuring the health and safety of our residents, returning loose dogs to their owners, picking up and taking strays to the animal shelter, returning livestock to the pastures, investigating, investigating instances of animal cruelty and violations, and assisting with the removal of dead animals on the roadway. So all that is dictated through our contract, and that's what they do. Where we get into the gray areas with animal control, and because we're on the outskirts of Wichita, we do have issues with skunks and possums and foxes and coyotes, really, animal control doesn't handle a lot of those situations, but one thing they really do a good job of, real good job of, is if you contact them, they'll provide very valuable advice and training and get you to the right people that will help you with those certain situations. So a lot of times, they have a list of people that have contractors, they'll come set a trap for a skunk that's maybe bothering you, or possum, and they'll trap it and dispose of it for a fee. So they're really a partner in a community-wide, kind of getting rid of a lot of those nuisance wildlife. I will note, you know, it, it's illegal to fire a gun within city, that includes pellet guns and bows and arrows, I talked to the chief, I was like, what do you hear mainly here, and, you know, what if I use a bow and arrow to kill it, those types of things, it's still illegal. The other thing I'll emphasize is our police department has a really good relationship with animal control, so please, if you're, if you're having an issue, either call animal control first, but, you know, sometimes, you know, I was, I was with Chief Atterberry, and he got a call from animal control, and they, they communicate really well, so really, just try to work within animal control or the police department, they, they, they have a good relationship. A lot of times, we'll get some residents that might call after hours, I think animal control has an after hour service that I think some of our problems in the last two or three years has came from, maybe a resident getting the wrong information, so if you have a concern, please call that number I showed you during business hours is best to get the most valuable information, but that, that's, that's what I, the best I could get from Chief Atterberry, I haven't luckily dealt with a lot of animal control issues, but we had one pop up last week, and I thought maybe we'd get a little update on this. So that's my report tonight, Mayor, and let me know if you have any questions.
Well, I was a little surprised you said they don't deal with skunks and possums, because the, this skunks and possums in the middle of Wichita, you know, they live in the sewers and such, so.
Yep.
I'm surprised they would say they don't deal with those, but.
Yeah, so, so it's kind of, again, we, we could get into a lot of gray areas, their, their scope doesn't deal with it, so I don't want to say that, they will, you know, if it becomes a public health issue, those types of things, they'll, they'll kind of evaluate the scope, so that's why it's always good to call them first, explain the situation, then they'll direct you to the best course of action.
Okay, good, thank you. All right. Sorry to cut you off. Okay, well, we'll move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions now. So the first item is in March of this, of this, of last year, the city of Bel Air was contacted by Aspen Fund LLC regarding a new development at the northeast corner of 53rd and Webb. Aspen Funds plans to invest $105 million for the construction of five buildings totaling 912,925 square feet, almost a million. So this development is anticipated to generate approximately 609 jobs with an average salary of $44,000 in today's market. Shortly thereafter, industrial revenue bonds were negotiated and issued by the city of Bel Air to facilitate the project, and construction of the first building is currently underway. In January of this year, Aspen Funds approached the city to request an amendment to the resolution of intent, they aim to involve additional investors, investors in the project, necessitating a city notification and amendment of the intent. Aspen Funds will retain major majority ownership, owner Dan Schultz, I believe, is online, if I think I saw him online.
Yes, sir.
And Mark Spector are here via Zoom to address questions. I think Kevin Cowan is physically here from Gilmore and Bell, Gilmore and Bell, and will be available to answer, address questions as well. So this is, this is for the next two action items on the agenda, A and B. Mr. Schultz, or Mr. Spector, do you have anything you'd like to offer?
Now, Dan, I don't really have anything unless, unless you do, but just so everyone knows, this is really just, you know, to account for the fact that we have some investors who have 1031 funds, and because of that, they have to take their ownership, you know, as a part owner, rather than just being in the ownership LLC, so it's, obviously wanting to be a good partner, not hide any balls here on what we're doing, but it's still an Aspen project, and you're still dealing with Dan, and everything right now is on the up and up. I know the first building is looking to have the shell be done this summer, and so we're, we're looking to keep going.
I would add, one thing, Kevin Cowan, Gilmore and Bell Cities Bond Council, the original documents provided that the resolution of intent or the letter of intent could be assigned with the consent and approval of the governing body, and so to the extent, something may be a little different, because the investment group is maybe different than contemplated, the investment group could come back to you every single time and say, this is a little different than that general language we had in that resolution from 2024, will you approve and consent to this? And this is an attempt to try to address it with better language, more specific language about how these investment groups may come together, and trying to be specific about what's an affiliate and what will qualify, without having to come back to you every single time there's a different entity that's maybe formed.
So you're anticipating that an investment group might have different owners, and that changes, then we have to come back every time an owner changes an investment group?
The original documents were very broad and general, and basically said Aspen Funds LLC or an entity that's created by the principles of Aspen Funds LLC. And now it's broader, we're contemplating that an affiliate would be another legal entity to be formed by the principles, or a group of entities, including tenants in common, so long as Aspen Funds LLC or its principals own majority interest or have management control. So Aspen Funds is still going to be the lead player on this, just as you expected, but as was referenced, because of some different investment opportunities, they may have some different owners than maybe we were thinking about a year ago, and I don't know if exotic is the right word, but there may be more exotic, limited liability companies or things like that that have to come together to make the investments work. But again, I think the important thing, and Ted has referenced it, is Aspen Funds is still the lead on this, and you're going to know that, and so, again, in an attempt to avoid coming back every time maybe a different LLC is formed or a different entity than would have fit into the more narrow definition from a year ago, we are trying to broaden it, so they don't have to come back to you, as long as you understand Aspen Funds is still in control, either as the controlling investor or the manager of that investment group.
Any council members have questions for Mr. Cowan?
Mr. Mayor? Just to highlight for residents, residents at home, nothing about the financial terms or the abatement schedule is changing, this is, what you've mentioned is the sole change.
Correct.
That we're making, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Is there any, are there any guidelines from the city that would like preclude certain entities getting into some of these buildings? I mean, is there, is there something like that that we have?
So as far as tenants of these buildings?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have all the, all the, they have to follow all the codes and zoning regulations of the city.
Okay. I just didn't want like, you know, a place that's in there that's like a crazy bar place or anything like that, is that, is, do we have any rules on that? I'm just asking the question, I mean, because I'm just wondering, not that there would be that issue, but is there anything that says we're not going to have a triple X place go into one of these buildings? I'm just curious, not that there's going to be.
The, the city does have a robust policy, and I don't have it in front of me, the things it wants to incentivize, and I suspect there's going to be something, it may not mention that specifically, but it would mention the sorts of activities that it does want to incentivize. And I know, you know, these are, are commercial developments where you have an investor that's going to own it, and they want to find tenants.
Not an issue there, but I just was curious.
Yeah.
Do we have anything related to that kind of stuff, maybe we don't?
And there are some statutory restrictions on businesses that can benefit from property tax abatements, although it's.
Okay.
It's pretty narrow, I mean, it's corporate hog farms and certain retail, not all retail, but some retail. I mean, it's corporate hog farms and certain retail, not all retail, but some retail. So there are some, some guardrails, but it would probably be in the city's policy and I don't have it in front of me, but it is a pretty robust policy.
Okay. Well, thanks. I just wanted, I was just curious. Thank you.
Might be something to look into, just, just so we know. If there's no questions or just, any additional questions or discussion, I'll entertain motions for item A and B. Just do one at a time, though.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dean?
I move, we accept a resolution of the governing body of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, amending its resolution number R dash 2024 dash 05, which relates to the advisability of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for certain land and building improvements to be located immediately northeast of the intersection of 53rd Street North and Webb Road in the city and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. David. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hear five ayes, any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Move on to item B, and this is same issue, so we'll entertain a motion for item B.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dean?
I move, we approve the amended and restated letter of intent to issue IRBs and provide other incentives for construction of an industrial manufacturing warehouse, distribution, flex and or office facility, Aspen Funds LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. On item C. So the construction, this is a supplemental agreement, professional engineering, so the construction of water and sewer in the Bel Air Lake subdivision is ongoing and needs construction observation. PEC was contracted with last October to provide construction observation and construction administration services. Due to concerns from contractors during the bidding process, the number of working days was increased during the bidding process from 60 days to 100 days. And this change necessitated a change in construction observation and construction administration fees. Additionally, it was noted, noticed that PEC contract did not have as-built surveying including in the scope of work. And this supplemental agreement includes PEC's cost for an additional 40 working days and their cost for the as-built survey and input in the city's GIS database. The costs associated with the project will be financed through our bond and special assessments against the benefiting lots. City engineer Anne Stevens is here to answer questions.
So as the mayor said, during the bidding, the contract days for the project were extended from 60 to 100 days upon the contractor's request. At that time, I had talked with PEC and we had agreed to just kind of let the current contract play out, let's get as much time as we can in, and then we'll get an amendment when their time gets, when they get closer to running out of time and budget for this. So they're, they're being proactive about getting this done. They're not out yet, but they're, they're kind of burning through budget a little bit. The other thing that should be noted is this is part-time inspection, it is not full-time inspection. That was something that, that took a little bit of bargaining, especially from my perspective, water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer infrastructure does not need full-time inspection. You're watching pipes go in the ground and as long as you go out on a sporadic basis, all the contractors that we use are very reputable, they've got a very good reputation. As long as you go out, spot check there on a daily basis, hey, do you have any questions? Make sure you see, you know, a few pipes going in, I think we're fairly comfortable. The water line has testing associated with it, as does the sanitary sewer line, so we can be comfortable that everything is going together and is going to serve us well into the future. I'm comfortable with the part-time, I know PEC was really pushing that full-time inspection. It's more difficult for them to arrange their inspectors on a part-time basis, but they're getting it done and doing a good job. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to stand for them.
I have a question. The extension looks like it's priced higher than the original amount. I would have expected it to have been about four sixths or two thirds of the original price for the extension and exceeds that amount.
Part of that is because they did tack on the costs for the as-built survey. So that's, that's why it's more.
Another 8,000 for the survey?
Correct. Yeah, they, they did not give me a breakdown for the survey amount. That was another kind of piece that we went back and forth on a couple of times. They had a couple of different options for surveys and the option that I chose was the least expensive and was taking their GIS instrumentation out to the project site and capturing the above-ground information, the fire hydrants, the valves, the sanitary sewer manholes, taking depth measurements on the sanitary sewer manholes and the valves. So we've got an idea where these are. That is a very similar procedure to what the other companies that we've used on construction inspection do. I didn't really talk with PEC further about what their higher price numbers covered, but this is what they're giving us is what everybody else does and what we've been getting from other contractor or from other engineering companies.
Any other questions for Ms. Stevens? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
I motion to accept supplemental agreement number one with professional engineering consultants for Bel Air Lake's construction observation and administration and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt, a second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Welch is voted against. That motion carries four to one. All right, move on to item D. This is a acceptance bid for pavement improvements in Chapel Landing, so developer Chapel Landing Fifth, ready to move forward with the construction of the paving improvements to support the subdivision. Four contractors submitted bids, the cost of improvements for these projects is financed through bond and spread through special assessments against the benefiting lots. So Ms. Stevens is here to present bids and answer questions.
Sure, so Chapel Landing Fifth, we had the water sanitary sewer and storm sewer on this. It wrapped up several months ago in the end of last year. They're ready now to begin the paving on this project. So you've got bids in front of you. There was some minor inconsistencies when we opened the bid. We actually held two bid lettings at once. We held the Chapel Landing Fifth bids and paving bids for Arthur Heights Estates. Arthur Heights came in over the engineer's estimate, so they had to get a new revised petition, which will be before you in your March meeting. But we had one contractor that bid on both projects, they just put their bids in the wrong envelope. So the bid was clearly labeled Chapel Landing Fifth and Arthur Heights Estates, but the bid for Chapel Landing Fifth was in the Arthur Heights Estates envelope and vice versa. So one of the contractors did call and question that and they're like, are you, you're just going to waive it? And it's like, well, it was very clearly a mistake. If it happens again, there's going to, you know, we're going to obviously have to discuss it, but everything was clearly labeled in the correct, everything was in the correct packet, it was just in the incorrect envelope. So I wanted to make sure that I put that forth so you all understand if there was any questions coming after this. The contractor that was concerned would not have been the second low if we would have thrown this out. So I'm not entirely sure what their concern was, but it, it was good to mention it and I just wanted to bring that forward.
And for clarification, the contractor that mixed up the envelope wasn't the low on this particular bid or was?
That is correct. They were not the low. They also made a math error in one of their bids and, which did not change substantially. It did not change the order of the bidders, so that will be on the project in May or in March.
I appreciate the transparency of that matter because we need to be open about those things.
Definitely. So anyway, Kansas paving was the low bid on Chapel Landing Fifth. We have worked with Kansas paving on quite a few projects. They've always done a good job for us and their, their work does speak for itself. So if you have any questions on Chapel Landing Fifth, I'm glad to stand for them.
So Anne, I actually do have a question, but it's not related to Chapel Landing Fifth, but it is sort of related. So I noticed over the last, I don't know, six months, there was, and it's near Chapel Landing Fifth, it's the paving that was constructed that connects the older neighborhood to the newer neighborhood. I noticed there was a lot of cracking that was occurring and there was panels that had been replaced.
Yes.
Can you bring us up to speed on what was going on there and are we worried about any of that occurring in any of those other locations as we, as we put it?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask a point of order here. That's not the subject on the agenda and I'd appreciate if maybe we'd have that conversation outside to the council meeting.
I just asked if we're worried if it would be impacting this. I think it does relate to this bid or to this project.
It's, what I'm, what I'm hearing is you're questioning the work of another project and asking if it affects this project. And I don't see how that's relevant. So I would ask our city attorney to clarify if that's out of, out of order of this, of this agenda item.
I didn't hear a motion at this time.
There's no motion yet. The question is, he's, he's questioning some work of another project close to this project and, and questioning whether that is the effects of that on this project. I don't want to put words in his mouth because, yeah, let him explain that, but it doesn't appear to me that it has anything pertinent to this project in that this is a, a completely separate bid. And if we have questions about the quality of work on another project, that's a separate question for another, another.
I would like to clarify that. So my question wasn't so much on quality as are we worried what happened on those areas that we had to repair impacting anything that caused that? I don't know the answer. Are we worried that that same issue could occur on this other project that's nearby? That was my direct question as it relates to this project.
The question is, should we pursue that, that, what he's asked?
And it sounds like Councilmember Dean is not wanting to talk specifically about the details of this other project, but is trying to figure out whether or not we are going to suffer some consistent issues?
I guess what I'm, where I'm going with that, and part of it was going to depend on the answer that Anne was going to give of whether or not she believes that that issue could repeat itself, was whether or not we should proceed with this project. Sort of where I was going with that.
If this information would be helpful in the discussion, of course, if we have any other speakers, I think it is not going to be a discussion, it is going to be to outside of the council.
Well, that's my, that is my concern, is we start talking about this other project, this city talking about this project, and I don't want us to go down that road.
I can sum it up in about 30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
I can sum it up in about 30 seconds.
Sum it up, please.
And I'm not saying it is related, I just want to make sure before I vote that we don't feel like.
Sure, the, the way we used to do things is we would have the water and sewer and grading contractor do all of the subgrade preparation work and then the paving contractor would come in and just pave where we're the top. Now we are doing, we're having the paving contractor, if they do not do the grading, then they do come in and rescarify and recompact the street grade, so they are comfortable, as are we, that we'll have a good subgrade. So I'm not concerned moving forward with this one, but given the issues on the previous one.
Sounds good. Yep, no, that helps. I think that's good to know.
Any other questions or discussion? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
I motion to accept the bid from Kansas paving in the amount of 854,747 dollars and 95 cents for paving improvements to serve Chapel Landing Fifth Phase One and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Welch. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. On item E, part of pavement maintenance plan, PEC assisted the city with selecting bids for pavement patching, curb and gutter replacement and milling and overlay certain streets within the city limits. Three contractors submitted bids, the base bid includes patchwork from the 2024 and 2025 street maintenance plan as well as mill and asphalt overlay as on selected streets. Alternates one and two include additional locations for a mill and overlay and city engineer is here to present the bids and answer questions. So this is always exciting, we have multiple alternates.
Definitely. I did put together a very brief presentation, just kind of to remind council as well as citizens as to what this project will entail. Our planned budget was 1,900,000. We subtracted 85,000 of that when we accepted bids last year for the pavement marking and refresh on certain arterial streets. It's not all of them, but it is most of them. And then the 2024 and 2025 street maintenance, these are copied from a presentation PEC did in November, showing the areas of town that will, in those respective years, were supposed to get patched, but due to the issues that we had with bids several years ago, we're getting them in 2025. And then just a little bit, I know it's very difficult to see, but we will be working in Long Terrace, just doing some curb and gutter repairs as well as some patching. In Pearson's, the west neighborhood, we tried to get most of that done two years ago, but as always, you walk it in the spring and when you come back in the fall, you find more issues. And we did add some at that time, but there were more that we found, so we rewalked and added those again this time. A few locations in Pearson's East. And in Bel Air Heights, we walked this neighborhood, there are several cul-de-sacs that are needing repairs. The purple will be completely replaced with new curb and gutter repair and then the green is more of a mill and overlay with patchwork. And there is another cul-de-sac further up north that the ceiling machine broke through when they were here last year and that was added as an addendum to this project, so it is not in these slides, but it is included in the bids. And then the mill and overlay work, the, all of the green that you see was included in the base bid for the project. Alternate one is the area in red and alternate two is the area in yellow. So kind of to summarize, the 1.9 million was the budget. We removed 85,000 for the pavement striping. The base bid of the green mill and overlay as well as all the part, the patching repairs was 951,185. That is from the APAC contractor. We have not used them in Bel Air in recent memory. They have submitted bids on numerous projects, but always come in not low, so we haven't been able to use them. They are a very reputable contractor and work all over this area, so I don't have any concerns with working that, with working with them. I'm actually kind of looking forward to it. At alternate one, 84,734. At alternate two, 183,329. Full-time inspection, we do not have a contract on this yet, but it will be coming, but that was estimated at 75 to 100,000. So the total using that 100,000 in inspection cost was 1.4 million. So the total using that 100,000 in inspection costs was 1.4 million, which is blessedly underneath the budget of 1.9. Very rarely happens, I think APAC for their good numbers. So we have room. So I would encourage council to accept the bid that we have before you tonight. That does leave us some room later this year. And as we go through this project, if there's areas that we find, which there always are, that we can add a little bit to this through a change order that will come before council for approval. Or if there's another project that comes along that needs to get attention as we move through the year, I really would rather not spend the entire budget if, if I can help it. So that is what I have. If you guys have any questions beyond this, I'm happy to answer them.
So just to clarify, does this take care of the southern part of Edgemore? Is that included in the base bid? It's a little hard to see with those maps. That's why I asked that question.
Yes. No, it does not. That would be an extra piece. So that's something that we can certainly look at adding.
Okay. All right. Very good. Any questions for Ms. Stevens?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Do you have a rough timeframe for this work all getting done or just throughout the year?
They, they're looking to get it started as soon as they can. So that's kind of, they can get started on the concrete work. Not now with the negative temperatures, but as soon as it gets a little bit warmer. It, concrete doesn't have to be above freezing or above 40, 50 degrees. The asphalt work will have to wait till after that. Once the council awards the contract, we'll set up a pre-construction meeting with APAC and kind of get their game plan as well as set rules of engagement up. I don't want to have them tear up huge chunks of pavement and have citizens have to swerve and maneuver around on streets. So there's gonna have to be a limited amount of time between opening it up and closing it up. It's just kind of be, you know, be cognizant of citizens. So I do not have a timeframe yet. I know they were wanting to get started as soon as they could. And then we're gonna make sure, I know there was a timeframe in the bids. I just don't have that information in front of me. But it will not drag throughout the entire year.
There was a time APAC had a lot of asphalt plants in the area. They still have those asphalt plants?
I believe they have some. I'm not sure if they have all of them.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm gonna make a motion, but I want to ask our attorney, do I need to list the add alternates individually, the prices? Or could I just say a total and include both of the alternates?
Since we have it clear on our chart, if that's accurate, that would be fine. Did you see the alternate? Okay. And she can add yes and no. So if you, if you need to alternate one, that's fine. We have that that correlates with our chart and that's also part of our agenda.
Yes. So if you just say base bid plus alternate one and two, that should be clear enough.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna make a motion then to accept the base bid and alternate one and alternate two from APAC for the 2025 maintenance program in the total amount not to exceed $1,219,247.70 and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I heard two seconds. I think I heard John first, so.
I will.
Okay. So, so I have a motion by Ms. Hamburg and a second by Mr. Welch. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. I'd like to move on to executive session and then come back to item F. And the like 15 minutes for personnel, non-elected personnel matters and invite our city attorney, which is not in the verbiage of the motion. So please invite the city attorney.
I think we might need a little bit longer to get the Zoom meeting stuff coordinated.
I have it set up in the back. Might take three minutes to set everything up.
Okay. We'll go for 20 minutes. It's all right.
Okay. I'll make a motion to recess into executive session to discuss the city attorney's performance review. The discussion will pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The meeting will be for a period of 20 minutes and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 8:11 PM.
Mr. Welch, would you please add the city attorney to that motion?
I'm sorry. Yes. And include the city attorney.
Second.
Thank you. I have motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Executive session for 20 minutes.
I don't know, we're pretty forthright out there.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. We're now ready to move on to item F.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we approve a second amendment to employment agreement of the city attorney as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
And I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Dean and a second by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion?
Are Greg and I in the meeting?
You are. I hear you. At least I hear you, Greg.
I can't see council chambers, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
We thought we were still in the back room.
Okay. You're both in council meeting, so, all right, good.
Oh, there you are.
All right, so a motion and a second. Did you hear the motion in the second?
Good to repeat it.
Okay, so the motion is to approve a second amendment to the employment agreement of the city attorney as presented and authorize mayor to sign. I have a motion, that motion is made by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. Schmidt. If there's any discussion, we can have the discussion. If not, I'll entertain them. Well, I'm ready to call for a vote. I guess I got the motion. So I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 I hear four ayes. Is there any opposed?
Aye.
And who's opposed? Mr. David? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that motion carries four to one. So just item 13, discussion and future issues. Any other issues we needed to discuss tonight?
No, I just failed to thank Marty and the Public Works guys for the job they did today and they'll do throughout the night. And so just thank Public Works publicly here.
Yeah, that's very good and please keep those. I'm trying to think of the east-west streets clear because that wind is blowing them right over as fast as they give them plowed.
Definitely noticeable where they've gone through.
Yes, it is. So, thank you. All right. If there's no other issues, we'll move on to adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion to adjourn.
A second?
Motion by Mr. Schmidt, a second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor, say aye.
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 The motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Try to stay warm. It's going to be really cold tonight, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for the Zoom, Ted.